Jim, are we good?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the San Alina Planning Commission for August 4th.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Present.
Commissioner Monet.
Here.
Commissioner Kistner.
Here.
Chair Person Parker.
Present. Moving on to public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to close that and move on to item number four, scheduled matters. This is the Planning Commission's appointment of Mary Cobberstein to the San Alina Planning Commission, and I believe Cindy has a brief presentation for us.
Good evening, Chair Parker and Planning Commissioners. I'm very excited and honored to bring forward Mary Cobberstein to administer the oath of office to our newest Planning Commissioner. So, I can have you stay here and just face me, and if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Mary Cobberstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Please take your seat at the dice.
I'd like to invite Commissioner Cobberstein to her seat. Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to our consent items, there are two items on the consent calendar for this evening, the approval of the minutes from July 7th, 2015, and design review exemption of 1451 Big Rock Road. Would anyone like to pull either of those items either on the commission or from the audience? Seeing no comment on that, I would like to have a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobberstein? Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Person Parker?
Yes. And can we just reflect for the minutes that she is not approving the min- approval of the minutes as she was not a commissioner at that time?
Abstained.
Correct.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearings, item number seven, this is a discussion on the amendments of the city zoning ordinance specifically related to the floor area ratio exemptions. Do we have a staff report?
We do, thank you Chair Person Parker.
Thank you.
The topic of floor area ratio has been of interest recently as more and more projects are proposing floor area ratios at or near the maximum allowed. This is a particular concern in the medium density residential district as the majority of the city's housing stock lies within this district. Based on a discussion at the March 3rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to amend the medium density residential chapter of the city's zoning code to eliminate floor area ratio exemptions to maximum gross floor areas. Under state law, changes to the zoning code require the recommendation of the Planning Commission before the changes can be acted on by city council. It should be noted that no exemption are being proposed to be removed from the high density resident- residential district at this time. Another important note is that applications submitted before the city council action will be considered with the ordinance in effect at the time of submission. In regards to public comments on the housing element, second units and affordable units, the city has to comply with both state RENA numbers and the Calderon settlement. From data collected to date, it appears that second units typically rent at a rate equivalent to moderate income, which means that only five second units are needed to be built over eight years of the housing element at a rate of less than one unit per year to meet the RENA requirement. Under the Calderon agreement, the city faces significant financial penalty if the affordable housing goals stipulated in the agreement are not met, and Calderon second units do not count towards meeting the affordable housing requirement. Therefore, the city needs to be focusing on incentives for affordable housing, not incentives for second units. As a practical matter, it's impossible to guarantee the affordability of second units. Even if the second units are deed restricted, the owner can take the position that they are not being rented or that they are being used by a family member. In short, there's no accountability when it comes to the affordability of second units. It seems likely that second units are being built as much as they are in St. Helena to make homes more marketable, given the high cost of housing in St. Helena. The result from a design perspective is the current floor area ratio exemption for second units and covered parking tends to create large homes out of scale with many of the neighborhoods in the medium density residential district. The city seeks to correct the situation, not by eliminating second units, but by doing away with an incentive that appears to be generating second units at a rate what- at a rate beyond what is needed to meet housing requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Does anyone have any questions of staff at this time?
Have we received any other public comment besides the letter from Ms. Heinz?
We have not.
Any other questions of staff? All right, I'd like to open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Hello, everybody. Dave Devon, 1842 Pine Street. I think Donna's letter, I got a copy of it, a neighbor of ours and a friend, I thought she had some really good points. I just would like to add to the conversation just a few things. I think there should be incentives for property owners to actually build a real unit that could be used as a second unit, as a rental. Maybe there should be incentives that they meet certain criteria, like there needs to be a kitchen with X amount of appliances, there has to be a bedroom, there has to be a bathroom, there has to be a rental, rental living space. I think what some people have concerns are, and these become outdoor dining rooms, another bedroom, disconnected. Units, I think, add really unique character to properties. I'd invite all of you, if you haven't been to my house on Pine Street, 1842, we were encouraged by Greg to do this. We thought that's what the city wanted, so we added an actual two-story rental, second unit dwelling, whatever you want to call it, in the front of our house and currently have somebody residing in it. I have like, I think, 12 people I can rattle off right now that I'm probably going to be one of them in the future that's going to need a rental unit in this town. But it adds really wonderful character because it made the houses smaller, it gave disconnection to the buildings, and I know Alan, our mayor, has walked through it. 1,200 people walked through it through the kitchen and the vineyard. So if you want to see what I think it might be a good example of requiring design standards, I'd love to welcome you to my home, or to our home. That's about it. I just think, oh, and there was a comment in Donna's letter that I thought was pretty interesting because it applied to us when we restored the farmhouse on 1331 Stockton Street. In the future, we didn't know if I was going to have to take care of my mother, or we had an aging relative, so we designed a disconnected barn, you probably see it, and we designed it in a sense that we didn't even put concrete on the floor. We left it with rock road base, so if one of, if we wanted to meet the standard, we could take half of it away and create an actual parking structure still there, but it was tandem, so we could have actually made another second unit back there. We don't own that house now, but I'm one of those people that thought, oh, we should plan on this in the future, so not overdevelop my property now, but maybe in the future we might need that and be on the ground level. So those are just some examples of why I think you should really think about whether you take away these exemptions, or actually the square footage. I wasn't prepared to speak so quickly. But the other thing too is I think it all goes back to design review. There's great examples of it, but I think our town really needs to put a design review standard with very, very specifics about what is going to be built in the future. And I think that will help because some places it's appropriate, some places it's not appropriate, and each property should be looked at on its entirety and its neighborhood, not just a mess. So those are my comments. Sorry they were so jumbled.
They weren't. Thank you very much.
Hi, Dr. Brad Nickensen, 1842 Pine Street as well. Just a couple of points. I know the affordable housing issue is a tremendous problem that needs to be addressed. I think there are other reasons, from my understanding too, to have these exemptions. I think as far as the garage exemption, the idea is to really have functional garages for people so they are not parking on the streets. We've seen a couple of homes, you know, and having gone through the process twice, that the minimum required, I think, for a garage or a covered parking place is really not functional. I mean, you cannot drive a car in, and what's required, I think, in the minimal, at open doors on both sides and not hit the walls. So I think to take away the incentive for people to build a real garage and get cars off the streets, I think is something worth, you know, considering and continuing to allow. As far as the second units, I think the other point besides affordable housing, and David touched on this, is I think a lot of family situations change, and one really great thing in living in a town like this is to be able to have the space, a second unit, whether it's for an aging parent or whether it's for an adult child in transition, to be able to come back at home and to be able to live in town. And I think if we remove the exemption, we're potentially making that a lot more difficult for the community. So I think there are two important things that we potentially lose if we do remove these exemptions. I also, as a doctor, I think there's a very real problem when it comes to several of the homes that have been proposed or built in town, but from what I mostly hear, it's about bulk and it's about intrusion on neighbors. I'm not clear how reducing these exemptions are necessarily going to address that issue. And I think, as David said, that really comes down more to a design review process and really part of the Planning Commission process, and also for neighbors to, you know, in the neighborhood to be involved and to speak out in Planning Commission. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak at public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close a public comment and invite Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to tee off?
I'll jump in. So I've thought a lot about this and I've kind of, because it has been a conversation point and a discussion in many of our decisions over the last many months. But where I'm most troubled is that we don't have a lot of data. So, you know, I have spoken with Noah in particular and trying to determine what's happened with these second units that we've built. Do we know who's renting them? Do we know what the rates are? And unfortunately, it's, staff is limited. We don't have a lot of tracking mechanisms in place. We don't have anything that kind of watches what happens over time, so, and I'm speaking specifically to second units, I think these are two totally different exemptions. But I believe that there are, there is a case to be made that we do need rental stock. It doesn't necessarily, this may not address affordable running, affordable housing specifically, and I think that might have been what was the intention initially, so I don't know that we accomplished what our real goal was. But I do think that there's been secondary benefits of putting some legitimate rental stock out into our community that didn't exist before. And I do think that on a second unit, that it doesn't, it also doesn't speak necessarily to massing because you are creating separate structures. And I think visually and in reality, having a break between these, the buildings on a property does provide, you shed, it provides air and flow and light coming through, so I don't think it has the same impact on a neighbor as one massive structure does that two well-designed structures would. I do want to make note of what Mr. Devon said in that design review can really play a big role here, and if we are, if we do set standards of what a second unit must contain and what it must, we have things that, that out structures can't have. We're very clear about the fact that you can't have a bathroom or you can't have certain things, but I don't think we're as clear and defined as what a second unit must have in order to be approved. So that's kind of my thoughts on the second unit. On the garage, I support eliminating that exemption. I think we address off-street parking, although off-street parking is incredibly important. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we already come back to that in other aspects of our building code, so to get a building permit approved, and this would be a question for staff, but I think in our discussions, that happens, that that's part of the process. You have to provide off-street, I mean, you have to provide parking on your property. So the exemption is sort of redundant and we're in essence giving someone a benefit of something they have to do anyway. So I would think by all means, I would support by all means eliminating that exemption, but I would, I'm a little cautious in just throwing the whole second unit out. I think there's some things that we'd have unintentional consequences that we're not prepared for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with all the points that you made. In addition, I think that the garage, yeah, being, being taken away as an exemption means it needs to be a smaller house, and I think that was part of the argument about the massing. So in that case, I think that does affect the massing. I agree, if there is a design review, that any second units that are upstairs or do, you know, come into the massing area can be decided on an individual basis. Also, I don't think these two things are mutually exclusive, the low-income housing and the second units, and I think the town has really decided to do infill for expansion, that that's preferable to large new construction, so I think this is in keeping with that philosophy and that when you do have an elder person, and I don't know if your mother is living with you for free, I don't know if the people who did the statistics were including all of the relatives who are living for free, who would have to be using other affordable housing in the town if they didn't have that place to live. So in that sense, it's, it's, some of the uses for the second units are keeping affordable housing open for other people who don't have that option. And an example, I have a disabled brother that I'm going to need to put in a second unit someplace, and he would be, you know, if he, if he can't do with me, he'll be in Section 8. So that would be an example of keeping a Section 8 place open for someone else who didn't have the other resource. Let's see. I think we can do both. Yeah, I think we can do these for rentals, even if they're not even medium-low, and I think it's kind of strange that, I read in the general plan, I remember the last draft, it's kind of like, will success ruin the second unit proposal? And it seems like the second units have been so successful that, you know, it's kind of like, well, let's get rid of them then, and that just doesn't seem right to me. I don't think that these second units will inhibit low-low affordable housing from being built. I don't think that that, that is going to happen. So I would support not taking that exemption away as well. And, and I also agree with the garage. Yeah. Although I do, I have to say one thing, I remember when speaking about Piedmont, I spoke with the city planner in Piedmont and other places where parking is really, really crucial, street parking, and they did have the garage exemptions there. So, you know, it is an issue, and I'm a little ambiguous on that one, so I could go either way on that one, actually.
Well, I disagree with the, with the second units. I agree with, we should, with the garages. I also believe that we should take the exemption away from the special units. I don't think we're saying that people can't build second units. I think we're cutting down on the, on the mass and the size of things that are going on the lots when they're going from, so many of them are going from as, as close to the maximum far as they can get, and I think we need to reduce that far, and I think at this point in time, this is the only way we can do it until the new general plan is approved, and we could look at maybe doing away with far and finding some way to do it. But I, I think we're building too many mansions, and I, and my personal opinion is that I would like to support reducing the, both entities, and I would also like to ask as to why we are leaving the shed in, in the, what is it here?
120 square feet.
Yeah. Under the, no.
It was, it's now number one, if you, C1. It was C2.
My understanding from the March 3rd meeting, what we took away at the end was that we were just going to get rid of the 400 and 200.
We asked for all three, I believe, at that, at that meeting.
That may be true.
Yeah. And, and I understand, I understand that it doesn't mean that just because we take away the exemption as far as a square footage is concerned, does not mean that we cannot build these things. And, and I feel that we've got to start cutting down the size of some of these, in some of these houses we're building, and so I would support taking all three of them away.
Thank you. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thanks.
Quite a night to be here. I'm troubled by this second unit removal as well, not just for the affordable considerations, but when I first looked at the zoning ordinance, it struck me that there's a real concern about making efficient use of land and using the space that's within the urban limit. And I do think that in the plan itself, second units play a role in that, increasing the supply of housing stock generally, not just necessarily affordable, but for a variety of reasons. And particularly to, and this is really not an exemption, it's a bonus. It's an incentive for somebody to do it, and it's there, I think, for good reason. So I would hesitate to take it out, and particularly in the zoning district that is the largest district where there's the most number of lots and, you know, the most potential to build them. I don't think everybody's going to want to build a second unit, but I think they serve other purposes than just providing affordable housing. As far as the parking, I'm kind of of two minds on that. I mean, the zoning ordinance does require everybody to provide one covered parking space, well, that's basically your 200 square feet, which is taken away from your habitable space so that you can get your car off the street and put it somewhere where it's not visible to everybody. And I'm not sure, you know, that taking away that 200 square feet is, makes a material difference. I view it as a quid pro quo for the requirement that you have to provide the parking. I don't have enough experience with the cases here to know how much of an effect 200 square feet has. But I also question why, why it wouldn't be applied in the other zoning districts. You know, if it makes sense in one zoning district, it might make sense in others. As, as I understand the zoning ordinance, if you have a certain size parcel, whether you're in the high-density, medium-density residential district or the low, at the small parcel sizes, you're basically talking about the same FARs and square footage. So if you had a 5,000 square foot lot in the low-density district and you had one in the medium, you've got the same rules, you know, applying. So I'm not sure that picking out one zoning district in this case works. Lastly, I think I can appreciate the issue. You know, I've seen it before. It's always striking to people when someone comes in and builds to the maximum limit that they're entitled to build to in, under a zoning district. And I think the way to address it is to look more closely at what is creating the character of a particular neighborhood, and it might take a lot of work, like surveying the average building size in an area, the height, to try to get a sense of how the different neighborhoods that are identified in the plan, what contributes to their character, and then maybe adjusting the FARs neighborhood by neighborhood based on the built environment that you already have.
Thank you.
I am in support of removing the 400 square feet and also the garage and possibly even the shed. Just to give a little bit of background on it, it's, the removing of, of these, of these, of these exemptions are because of staff being short-staffed right now. We can't go into that kind of surveying of neighborhoods and seeing the heights and everything. This is, was to be a fix because it is a serious problem that we are having with these houses being built out to the maximum, you know, and we had, the way that the zoning is, is this is just the medium residential is just a start for right now. It is to be applied to the other zoning. It's just, this is, we, I've been bombarding staff to get this on here, so I think that they just decided to just do one zone to start and see how it takes. Because if the Planning Commission and City Council say no, then they didn't waste their time on all several, I think, seven or eight zones that we have with housing. I definitely understand the incentives needing to be legit, and I think that there is an element of the design review that we can address that, but it was my understanding that this exemption of the 400 square feet was for affordable housing, and statistically, we can look to see if those houses are being used because they're not part of the affordable housing inventory. And this really has nothing to do with incurred, you know, like discouraging second units. It's about really respecting the limitations of a property and the sizing of it, and trying to maintain the scope and the size of homes in San Alina to maintain the feel of San Alina. And to maintain housing stock where it's not multimillion millionaires everywhere, that it can be people who work and live in San Alina before we completely pull the rug out from underneath our community. That was why I wanted this on here, and I feel that Grace is also the same way. I'm going to go a step further, and I did talk to Noah about this, and throw this out and maybe open up discussion again, but for the balcony porch and deck, I'd like to address a maximum square footage of an exemption on that, especially if it's roofed. That's also something that we've been seeing quite a bit of, is these roofed porches that are just massive, and that also needs to be addressed. And I, when I spoke with Noah earlier today, we said, you know, if it's not roofed and it's just, it's a deck, that's, that's something different. That's not inhibiting someone's view. That is just someone's outdoor living space, just the same as a lawn, so to speak. But if it has a roof, then that becomes a little bit more intrusive on a neighborhood's privacy, and just wanted to kind of throw that out there to you to see if.
Are you talking about number three?
I am talking about, well, it's, was.
Was.
Yeah, was four, now is three.
Okay, yes. I had a question about that, yeah.
Yeah. It's just something else to, if we're going to start taking care of these exemptions, that's also something that has been coming up on many applications where they have covered porches, and it's caused, it's a mat, and this is, the whole point of this is that there's a massing issue on these tiny lots, and we're trying to rein it in. No. I would like to jump in on, on that comment. I think, because I'm hearing you talk about two different issues, and I think they need to, they need to be put out there and talked about, but the idea of massing and putting a large house on a small property and what that does for character, I think that there's, we can perhaps get some support around that. But when you start qualifying that we don't want multimillion dollar homes, and we're suddenly putting some kind of morality or judgment against what a property value is to an individual and what they can or can't do with that property, and that it's somehow wrong. Well, then I will remove that statement. It's about massing. It has come up multiple times on this council and I just, or this commission, excuse me, and I do think that that's, at least from my perspective, area that, that I don't feel comfortable judging, and I think that that's something that our public needs to weigh much further in, and it's not for the five of us to sit up and decide what is right or wrong. I think what we are tasked to do and what, if we go back to what, we're, we're about enforcing and, and looking at what's the appropriate zoning, and that I feel comfortable talking about extensively, but I don't feel comfortable passing judgment on being wrong or right for the type of home and how much it costs to build it. I understand that, but where I'm coming from on that is that this town is being priced out of being a sustainable town. And so, and a lot of it has to do with houses taking on these smaller lot sizes and being maxed out to get the best bang for their buck, real estate-wise, and it's pricing people out of this town, and not everyone can afford to live here, but we need to have housing stock for the workers and the employees that live here. So yes, maybe me saying multimillionaire was incorrect and insensitive, however, it's a problem. And if you talk to Mary Stevenson at our house, it's a huge problem. So that is where my concern is, is that these houses, as Matt said, and I loved his analogy, it's just because you can drink 20 drinks does not mean that you should. That's what this FAR is. It's a maximum amount of what you should, could be able to do. It's not necessarily what you should be, should do, and people are taking it as a should rather than a could.
Well, I was going to ask on that, first of all, you're, that was a good argument for second units, what you just said about the housing, but I agree with Commissioner Sweeney that. But I agree with Commissioner Sweeney that, that it's about, you know, it's about the massing. And these porches could, you know, that could, that would have to be, I don't think they should be exempted from the square footage. You could argue that, that you could keep them there, but then if it was too massive, you would have, you know, I could go either way on that.
I do think that we just need to have more of an objective number rather than just-
Can I jump in on the porch thing real quick? I think covered porches can provide an articulation and a difference in elevations that I think is important to creating different aesthetics from different buildings.
I think it's just very vague right now.
It is, but I, I think when you start getting into potentially, you know, taking away an exemption for unconditioned covered porch space, it, it could lead to creating boxes. It's just something to think about.
I would like, I would like to also say that I agree with what Mary said about, about looking at it neighborhood by neighborhood. But I think the immediate thing that we have is that everybody, almost every one that we get that's coming to us recently, they're building it to max and, and so it's taking our housing stock. I would have no objection to putting something in there that if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna rent control these second units, I think that's fine. But to give them allowances to build second units, to have guests come up and spend the weekend or a month, that's what I have a problem with. I have no problem with taking, with, if you wanna make the rent restricted as far as affordable housing is concerned, that's fine.
I'm gonna piggyback on Grace's comment and saying I think that there are better incentives than a square footage exemption for second, for affordable second units, at least. And I think that if you wanna put a second unit on your property, and let's just look at, you have 13,000, 13,000 square foot property and your maximum FAR is .28 and your maximum square footage is 3,640 square feet for your, for your floor area, for your home. If you can't make that work, then you're not, you're not respecting the size of your property.
I wanted to add on, on what you were saying about the FAR number. Is it, I think we talked about this a little before. And is it possible to add language? Is this an appropriate place to add language that would say something like, you know, the FAR is a maximum limit and is only one of many standards that have to be met.
We had discussed, we had discussed that in the March meeting about having a disclaimer on that. And I, thank you for bringing that back up.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that language is appropriately added here or if that should go someplace else. I don't know.
I would add, there are a number of requirements for design that include multiple findings. So the FAR is not, is but one, but it's very prescriptive. And so when you get into someone trying to do a land use analysis to see, an architect trying to see what could be built on a site, that's one of the hard numbers that they can go to, whereas a lot of the other elements of design review are subjective.
But that's what I'm saying, if you could, because I know so many architects and so many lawyers have been here and have said, you know, we have met everything. It needs to be, I think if the language were there that, you know, this is a maximum and, and just, this does not, you know, is not going to be-
I think that we would rather be coming on the offensive with this revision rather than have to be on the defense that we have to be with the architects and the attorneys that come up on applications.
I had something. I mean, first of all, with respect to the porches, I'm not even certain we can discuss it because it really wasn't noticed.
Yeah, it's on-
Is that better? But it wasn't put forward as one of the things that was gonna be discussed to be an amendment to the ordinance. It was the second units and the garage exemption. So, you know, I defer to other people, but I'm not even sure that we could make that recommendation this evening.
Well, I'm not quite sure, but I do believe eliminating floor ratio exemptions, can that umbrella it?
Yeah, the description on the agenda is broad enough that would allow discussion of all the language in the code. It's, the agenda language isn't specific to the two recommendations that's in the staff report.
Okay. I do feel strongly about the second unit, though. I do think that it's a bit inconsistent with the general plan to take away this bonus. It does achieve other goals, the use of the land. It may not be the affordable unit that is, you know, the most affordable for the lowest income, but it achieves other purposes that benefit the community, like housing for family members who you don't wanna put them in a separate facility. You'd like to keep them living with you as long as possible. It may create other affordable housing in the community that maybe isn't under that umbrella, but is still less expensive than it is otherwise available. And I think the plan does address, you know, maybe even providing incentives for people to do that. So I, I think the final question I have is how many of these cases that came before you included a second unit? Or was it really just the mass of the principal structure? And if, if it wasn't a second unit, you're not necessarily getting at the root of the problem by just eliminating the incentive. And when you eliminate the incentive, you're taking away some of the other goals that can be achieved by allowing this type of housing.
One thing you guys could consider is only allowing, allowing the exemption for detached second units. That might help with the massing issue.
Yeah, it also, it also might, you know, I think we can, we can judge each case separately with respect to massing. And I, I wouldn't wanna, I don't think we should limit it in this language, but it's my personal opinion. Because I think we wanna maximize, we want to incentivize second units. I think that's what we wanna do. We want infill building, not just, not just affordable housing, but, but we wanna incentivize it, incentivize it. And I think this is a way to do it.
I, I disagree. I think that there needs to be a respect for the size of the property. And I think, but I don't think that taking away an exemption that would increase the FAR ratio is necessarily, if it was, if we were to lower the FAR numbers, I think that that would be more of trying to discourage people from having second units. I think taking this away is saying you need to be within, within the floor ratio that we're giving you.
I understand your urgency and, and especially for some of our, my fellow commissioners who have been at this a little bit longer. But I think that, I think to Mary's point, we, we are potentially eliminating some benefits that we're achieving through second units when the core issue is FAR. The core issue is the overall structure is too big. So I liked what Noah, or sorry, excuse me, what Erin said, that if we, if we link some kind of detached structure, which gets to the idea of, of better land use and still allows for character of the neighborhood. But if your true problem is that you believe these homes are too big for the location, then we address that, one, through design review, and we can address it through FAR. And so for the amount of time that you've waited to have a solution, to do a knee jerk solution that does, that isn't well thought out, that we don't have data, that the city cannot provide and not, because they're not trying, because they don't have staff and because it hasn't been tracked, we don't have good supporting data of what's been happening to these second units that have been approved over the last couple of years. The general plan is, the end is near, there's light at the end of the tunnel. And so we come back and we intelligently, with data, thoughtfully, look at FAR as a topic, separate from, or really which was the core of the issue. We don't start chipping away at it, which is what I feel we're doing, by trying to just do something. And again, and due respect for, for the time they've put into this over the years and conversation, but we have tools at our hands. We, we can deny applications based on design review. And those are very specific findings that we can make. And FAR is just one of them. But, and we have denied applications that include second units because the specific project didn't meet, and we couldn't comfortably state that it met design review. So we have that authority, we have that power, we have those tools. And I think this is a knee jerk reaction to something that's a far more complex issue.
I disagree. So we need to have a motion one way or the other.
I'm thinking maybe you should vote on the exemption separately.
To add each one, all right. So we are going to have a separate motion, obviously, for the 400 square feet. How do we, how do we word it? So let's start with that one. Let's start with a motion on the 400 square feet for second units. Do we have a motion?
I move that we do not eliminate it, that we stat. I don't know if that, if that's the proper way of, that we do not make the exemption for the second unit, 400 square foot.
So the motion is that the, it's moved not to, not to exempt the second dwelling unit.
That's correct.
Exemption.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's better to make the motion in the affirmative and then you can vote it down if you're down in favor of what's proposed.
Can that be restated in?
Move to keep.
That we, I move that we keep the second unit 400 square foot exemption. Thank you.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
No.
Chairperson Parker?
No.
Moving on to the garage, the 200 square feet for one covered parking space, do we have a motion? Either keeping it or requesting it be eliminated?
I make, excuse me, I make the motion that we eliminate the 200 square feet for garage.
That we keep the exemption.
That we keep the exemption, yes.
You would be like, you remove, you would do the negative, that you remove the exemption.
That we remove the exemption, yes.
Oh, you wanna keep the-
No, she wants to remove the 200 feet.
I wanna remove the exemption, so there is no exemption for the garage.
You move, move to remove the exemption.
That's correct.
That's what she means.
That we do not count the 200 square feet toward the FAR. Or we- That we do count the 200 square- All right, let me start over.
You, you, you move to eliminate the exemption.
That's correct.
It's a quadruple negative.
That's what I said to start with.
Second.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
No.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes. All right, and then moving on to the non-habitable accessory building for less than 120 square feet, do we have a motion on keeping or removing? Removing means it's no longer going to be used as a bonus of floor, square footage.
I move that we, that we eliminate the exemption for the non-habitable accessory building less than 120 square feet in size.
Second.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
No.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Then do we want to address the balcony porch or deck? Or do we want to, I was getting vibes from staff of leaving it alone.
I mean, at the end of the day, that's really up to you.
All right.
So if you'd like to make a motion, that's up to you.
I would like to remove that, I'd make a motion to remove that from the exemptions.
I second that.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes.
Do we need to discuss the basement attic or the legally constructed buildings that were just previously within the code, but then by an act of God had been destroyed?
I would suggest we don't.
I mean, I don't, I just leave those alone, but I just, in case someone felt the need.
And just for clarity, what we're speaking to in that set of structures is buildings that existed before and then were burned.
It's in the same footprint, crazy.
Yes, and it'll be in the same footprint. So it's, they're basically grandfathered into the previously, previous zoning that when it was built, it was zoned for.
Do we need to make a motion about adding some language to the FAR, you know?
I would, no, we don't need to-
This is only for, for addressing the exemptions.
Okay, okay, all right. So that will be next agenda, perfect.
Just, just to summarize, we have to keep the, the 400 square foot exemption. We are removing the 200 garage square foot exemption. We are keeping the 120 square foot exemption. And we are removing the porches and balconies exemption.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I would like to ask, is there some way we can put in there that, that just because you, we have a maximum FAR, that they can build a maximum FAR? I mean, because we hear this over and over and over.
I mean, that's what Bobby wanted to add.
And that's-
We'll look at-
If we have to put that in the next-
We'll look at some additional language that could be added to kind of provide qualifiers for the FAR to help Planning Commission make findings if they choose to deny based on massing.
Do you wanna do that for next meeting? That's fine, Noah, but I, I think we need that in there because, I mean, we get these lawyers coming here and that's the first thing they say is, well, we can build right to here.
Yeah, and I can't commit to, it'll be on the next agenda, but staff will look at it and will work on getting some language. But I'd like to do it in concert with also looking at all of the findings that are required and kind of talking, giving the Planning Commission the full design review, what design review really means and the full breadth of what that, basically, I think the Planning Commission has other means available, given the required findings. So I just wanna make sure you understand all of the options.
Now, I would assume that right now you're gonna have to amend the 93 general plan? Or are you gonna wait and do this until we get the, whatever year the new one's gonna be?
So this is purely the zoning code, that these are not identified in the general plan. The zoning code, this, these will have to be approved by the council. This is an ordinance change, so it's a legislative action. The council has final action on those. So at this moment, staff will take these changes that have been recommended by the commission to council for final action. So council has the final say on it. Timing of that, I can't promise it'll be within 30 days. But we will move forward and I'll add a little bit more of discussion as to kind of comprehensive code analysis in my department report.
Thank you, Noah, and Commissioner Sweeney?
And I just had a question, not a question really, a comment, based on, because of timing. So we've talked about other comments and changes that we might make into language. Are you separating that conversation and discussion from what we just decided, well, what we've just decided be moved on to council? Or are you waiting until we then wrap these other things up?
What you decided will be moved on to council as its own item.
Thank you, all right. Does anyone have any other questions for staff?
I just have a question. I just, I did not understand the last issue, what you were asking to, about not going to the maximum FAR, Grace.
We wanna have almost a disclaimer that, somewhere written that says that just because this is the FAR does not mean that you should build out. That's an either, maybe not even in the municipal code, maybe just in the building application packet. Just something to kind of, what's been going on is the lawyers and architects have been coming to us and saying, well, we can do it this big, so we're going to and you can't stop us. And then we have to say, no, we have other variables that we look at. It's not just FAR. And it, it has become quite contentious and sometimes a little angry. And so this is, that disclaimer is just kind of let them know, we, it's not, we're not just looking at FAR. We're gonna look at a multitude of, just what you said, the community, the, the character of the neighborhood.
The design review, really.
The design review of it, it's just, it seems like that is their main focus 'cause as, as Erin said, it's a number and people like to attach themselves to numbers.
So is this something you think should be in the ordinance? Or is this something that staff is gonna discuss with applicants when they come in? I thought it was, I was wondering if it should be in the ordinance because-
I think we should actually stop talking about it before we do a Brown Act violation and we're really talking about it a lot.
So I'll look at it comprehensively and bring the commission back a menu of options.
Well, lawsuit, consider lawsuits.
All right. Okay, perfect. So are we good with those motions and moving on to the department report? Perfect.
So I just wanna point out, the staff has chosen to add a department report to provide essentially kind of some general feedback as to what staff, what staff's been doing, the things that are going on with the department. And it seems like a good mechanism to allow communication between staff, the department and the Planning Commission. So I wanted to give an update on the Hunter EIR project. Council got an update on that on July 28th.
Noah, can I interrupt you and just, can we put a disclaimer of, let's not discuss this to avoid Brown Act violations? This is just an update for us to be informed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So council has given an update on July 28th. There's a council report with an updated schedule on that agenda that's available online for you to review. But I just wanted to kind of provide a brief recap for the commission as I understand that there's a lot of interest in when that will be returning. So just to provide some background, in 2011, an EIR was initiated on a residential subdivision project called the Hunter Subdivision. In May 2012, that document was posted for public review and comment. And then in October of 2013, the document was finalized. However, prior to it being brought for the commission for action, the applicant pulled the, pulled the project proposing to do some additional analysis and project revisions, which include a signal at Pope Street, at the Pope Street Bridge, I'm sorry, Pope and Silverado Trail intersection. In addition to that change, it was determined that the traffic analysis, which had previously been done in 2011, was inadequate or invalid because of the amount of time that had passed from, from when that analysis was done. As you'll remember, or you're well aware, that was kind of in the heart of the recession. Tourism was not anywhere near the current numbers. And so the idea is that current traffic- And so the idea is that current traffic data is much, is needed to fully analyze the potential impacts from that project. So that work has been completed, and it's being incorporated into the revised document, which is proposed to be completed September 22nd of this year. So just within about six weeks or so, that doc will be completed, posted most likely. I, I can't commit that it'll be recirculated as a draft EIR or final EIR, and that determination will be made by the department once the document's complete. So CEQA is very prescriptive as to when documents must be recirculated, and staff has not seen the document yet to make a determination as to whether or not those thresholds have been met.
And if it's a draft, just to interrupt, if it's a draft, if there's so, too many substantial changes where it's not like the previous draft.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure everyone at home knows.
That's correct. So we can't make a determination on that yet, but the consultant has committed to the September 22nd timeframe for completing the document. Staff will make a determination. It'll potentially either be put back out for comment or brought back for planning commission review. But just to let the public know that that is coming up and let the commission know as well.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that, that we have also initiated a agenda review meeting between the planning department and this, the planning commission chair and vice chair to review agendas prior to bringing them forward, and then also discuss upcoming agendas. I know there's been some kind of concern as to how we get items on, on agendas. And I just want to remind you all that agendas are set by a combination of factors. First of which is the council goals. So the council have, have set goals that we all need to work to implement. And so a lot of the agenda items that are brought forward will be based on those goals. Additional factors are the goals of the planning commission, staff resources, being able to work on individual kind of policy level projects. And that's dependent on our workload, depending on applications, because we also have a commitment to our applicants who have paid fees and expect, you know, progress, progress being made on their individual applications that they paid for and have, have deadlines and timelines on. I also wanted to talk about the fact that there is this list that's the planning commission has provided to staff that identifies some of those issues that's where this FAR item came from. So we did pull that off the list because of the, you know, the increasing interest in it. But we will be looking at comprehensive zoning code updates after the general plan is adopted, because there will be a number of, of comprehensive or zoning code revisions that'll be required. And that gets back to the timing of the kind of disclaimer language with the FAR. I'm not sure when we'll begin to get that, most likely before we begin these comprehensive zoning code updates, but I can't commit to that at this point. But I just want to let you know. And then I also finally, also because of all the interest in the community and, and by the planning commission and city council, staff, planning department staff will be conducting a town hall meeting on short term rentals. We don't have a lot of specific information on that, but we are tentatively scheduling it for September 23rd of this year. The idea is that it'll take place here in Vintage Hall from 5:00 to 7:00. And so that's a tentative item for the public to be aware of. We will do much more outreach. It'll be circulated through all the community engagement mechanisms that we've put in place. But anyone who's interested in being notified directly can contact the department, and we've created an interested citizen list that I have a few names on, but we will also do all of the typical outreach to make sure that everyone's involved. But I just wanted to state that publicly here.
Perfect, thank you so much.